Well, good afternoon. Welcome. Thank you for joining us. This is the Marion City Council Work Session for Tuesday, August 25th. I will note that Councilmember Sternad is joining us via Zoom. Okay. First thing that's marked for discussion on the agenda, there's an item that's being removed. Is that, do we do anything with that or just acknowledge it's been removed? Okay. It's number two under Presentations, which is a presentation from Eagle View Partners regarding tax increment financing request. See Mr. Glue coming forward?
All right. Good afternoon, everyone. Nick Glue, President of Marion Economic Development Corporation. I'm just honored to be able to introduce to you all the development team that is proposing what I believe to be one of the most significant investments for our uptown that frankly we've ever seen. I think we've talked about and we've worked towards the day that private investment of this quality would come to our community. And what you're going to begin learning about today, I know some of you have had the opportunity to see some of the work of Eagle View and Mr. Cottrell up in the city of Cedar Falls. What you're going to see here today and begin learning about at a deeper level in the next few weeks to come, I know that it's a result of probably six months of work that lots and lots of people in this community have been doing to make sure what's being proposed aligns with the vision that this community has been working on for, well, you can almost call it 10 years. The timing of this, I think, is really exciting because while this community is down a little bit just from the last few weeks and everybody's working hard to return this community to the one that we love, we have someone that's coming here today that I have witnessed shares the great love of this community with the amount of work that he's put in and his team have put in to come here today. So with that, I want to introduce Mr. Mark Cottrell and Audrey Cottrell. They will spend a few minutes really just introducing you today to the project so that we're all on the same page. And then the action that we ask for today is really what will begin to allow us to kind of educate you all at a deeper level as it relates to the actual financial assistance request that we'll be bringing back to you in fairly short order here in a few weeks. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mark.
Good afternoon, everyone. Stan, thank you very much, Mayor. I stand in front of you and I just want to start by saying I think our hearts go out to you. You guys have had both a lot going on. I think everyone's had a lot going on with COVID. It's certainly taken a toll on a lot of us and to have this as a kind of a second punch for a community like Marion is a lot. So I wanted to just start by saying, you know, as an Iowan, as someone from Cedar Falls, I would consider you a sister city and good job, our hearts are with you. So it's funny and I thank Nick for his comment. I would say I think the comments or the history of this goes back even further. I think about two years ago, if I remember right, Mayor Nick started talking to me and Nick started talking to me and said, hey, you've done some marvelous things in Cedar Falls. Would you come to Marion? And I said, yeah, I'm trying to retire, you guys. Can you maybe not do too much here? You know, we're, we're, we're pretty busy and we're doing just fine. You never know when you start those kind of discussions exactly how the timing of something like this is going to come together at a time like this. And I think I wanted to start by making those comments and saying it's, there are always the tough times and there's always the way forward out of them. And I think it's great that your community is as strong as you are and it has as great a leadership as it has. I'm sure that you'll be fine. I would tell you that I would, that we're standing in front of you talking about multiple years. I think the, the count I made in sort of preparation for this is I think I've been in front of the Cedar Falls Council 21 times in the last 10 years. So they've gotten to know us quite a lot. We expect to get to know you quite a lot. We expect to get to know Marion a lot. And, you know, we, we welcome that. We welcome the opportunity to sort of answer questions and really invite our vision to be shaped by the community and by, you know, the citizens and the representatives. So we, we looking forward to that. I think some of you have had an opportunity to visit Cedar Falls. Seems like an eternity ago. It was only a few months ago, but I think it's nice to be able to point to something that we've just recently completed in a community so similar to Marion and have a high level of confidence that we can do the same thing here. And we're excited to present this plan to you. So this will be probably the first of a series of presentations that we'll make as we sort of roll the plan out, but this will be a good introduction. Mayor Nick introduced Audrey here. I want to sort of point out, we are a father-son or father-daughter, sorry, father-daughter organization. And it wouldn't be at all in keeping with me to be standing in front of you. I'm 62 years old and say, we're going to do this 10-year project. I wanted to make sure you got a chance to meet Audrey and it very well be that the last half of the presentations might be her leading them. So we worked that sort of closely together. 10 years ago in Cedar Falls and when we started this, and I guess I want to just remind people, 2008 was tough, too. You know, we had just come through a real estate crisis. There were a lot of people that were sort of wondering what was going to happen after 2008. We started building and planning for our development in 2009, 2010, and obviously have in the ensuing 10 years, you know, worked on that. I don't feel badly at all about standing here now with COVID and everything else going on around you. I don't feel badly and we've talked a lot about it, about planning and saying our better days are coming and we intend to bring this kind of investment and this kind of redevelopment here. We have a high level of confidence that we will do that. So if you've seen what we've done in Cedar Falls, know that that's the kind of multiple phases of development that you can expect to see from us. We really see uptown Marion as being a heart of this community, if we could start to say it that way. And it's not to say that there aren't other wonderful things going on in the community, but we believe that a community needs a center and it really needs, you know, maybe a spiritual and social, you know, sort of center. And a lot of the plan that I think you'll see is starting to, to at least begin the dialogue about what that might look like. So, you know, we'll see those things happen. I would also tell you, and I would thank you, there's an awful lot of work that's being done. You'll see the theme of the presentation that we're going to be talking about today talks in terms of a public-private partnership, whether it's streetscape or plaza or the public library work that's being done. We know there's a multiple sets of public projects that are going to be involved in this and we want to be a good partner in really working with you as you're trying to do those same things. So that's enough of me talking. Let me try and, and get through my comments relatively quickly. To sort of paint a vision and to start to get maybe a set of dialogue going, we talk about places. And what I mean by places are the kinds of things that where people can, for example, come together and it could be a cultural entertainment sort of district. For those who have seen our property in Cedar Falls, we've just opened a plaza area very like I think what you're planning in the downtown. And I'm very heartened. We spend a lot of time right now and see people coming out with donuts and actually spending time sitting at the, you know, the picnic tables. People want to be outside. They want to feel good about being safe, but also being able to be social. Gathering spaces, places to have events, whether it's farmers markets or, you know, private weddings, we see those as being the kind of things that, you know, make sense in this kind of a space. And obviously our component of this and where we really see it is this live-work portion of it, we obviously are seeing a new residential, a lot of the younger people, a lot of also, surprisingly, I don't think I knew going into this, that there would be so many people that would be, I'll call them empty nesters, who also want to stay connected to their community longer. No offense to the senior people, I just don't see myself as being old yet, happy to live in this kind of place. I'm not ready for one of those. So, you know, we're, we're very sensitive and looking to, you know, how do we bridge that? How do we keep people engaged and, and not moving? So retail and commercial area, you know, this is an uptown or downtown area and we'll see that as well. So I'm going to try and answer three, what I would consider big questions that you probably have. The first one of them, go ahead. The first one of them is really what's our basic plan? And as we said, we're really going to talk about that with what we can announce today. We're in the position where I think we're ready to move forward on our first couple of projects and we want to be able to answer questions for you about that. We will also answer what questions we can about more of our vision for downtown or uptown development. We want to make sure that we're answering the question for you and anyone else interested, who we are and sort of why we think we can do, what it is that we can do. And then this, Nate, this question of sort of what's the partnership, P3s, public-private partnerships, you hear of those things talked about a lot. How do we coordinate together to get done the things that we want to do? So that's what we want to try and do. Go to the next slide. It's fine. So Audrey is our, our marketing person. This is her brainchild. I would tell you that we have a pretty long, my great uncle actually was a minister here at the Methodist Church, and I remember coming down and spending lots of time picking up the train here and we went out and visited our family in, in California. We love the idea of sort of the train station and the building around the central state, around the central square. I'm not sure that we're going to do anything in a real literal way, but we are very definitely trying to find a way to sort of put a nod to a lot of the historical things that we have found in the downtown. So this notion of Broad and Main is a property that has historic meaning and it will be kind of the first area that we're really going to be talking about as well. Next slide. So we started the discussions at a planning level and looked at the vision that you had been working on for the uptown area. We really centered our first work on really, and I think if you've seen Cedar Falls in the work that we've done, you know that it's really focused around kind of block by block around the center. We see the center of this essentially being the square and we're really looking block by block around and trying to get a sense of what are the best properties to redevelop. As we walked around, we really came to the Marion Square Plaza property, what we're calling the Broad and Main area, as we thought the very first one that really needed to be looked at pretty hard. So that's the context of what we're going to be talking about today. Here's essentially a little, maybe a zoom in, if I could call it that, as we're starting to look at it, you can see the green area is essentially the central square. What we're talking about and we're going to be answering questions about today is we have a, we have an executed purchase agreement now with the Marion Square Plaza and we're really looking at redeveloping that parcel with two projects originally. And the first one of them, we're calling creatively, we're not that creative, so we just call it mixed use one. Essentially, it's a retail commercial area of the first and residential upstairs. The second project on the same site would be what we're calling residential one, which we envisioned at this point to be four stories, parking underneath and directly across from where the Marion Public Library will be relocated. We have interest and we're obviously looking at having more dialogue about what's going to happen with the existing Marion Public Library property. We'd be happy to have more conversation. We see that also adjacent to square and being a logical site for redevelopment as well. Excellent. Here's a couple of concepts and my apologies, we had some printing problems. We had to go old school a little bit with the hard copy handouts for you all. But this is essentially a concept that we're working on right now, just to give you a sense. The mixed use part of it shows the green retail area, if you will, on the first floor. We're really in our mind imagining Seventh Avenue as being the most commercial retail sort of, I guess I'll say thoroughfare. We imagine that being the, the walkable part with shops and coffee shops and, you know, places where you could essentially get a hamburger, eat outside. For example, those are the kind of things that, you know, seem like they fit in an area like this. We also imagine this will be a three-story structure that it would have a couple of floors of probably, I'm going to call them apartments. And by apartments, I mean generically probably lofts, one bedrooms, that sort of for rent property. Audrey would tell you, and we study this quite a bit, that she calls them the pre-suburban people that live with us tend to be about, I think our average is 26 years old, mostly single, probably, you know, either just out of grad school, you know, probably something like $60,000 to $75,000 income. A very high percentage of them not from the area. That's one of the things that I think we're very much looking at is there's an awful lot of people who would like to move into Iowa, like to move into communities like Marion, but maybe don't see the kind of housing stop typically that they would like to, you know, have or they may see in, you know, Minneapolis or Chicago or whatever the case may be. This will be that sort of a product pointed at that sort of a market. The, the blue areas that you can see along the side are really where we're talking in coordination with the plaza project and the streetscape. We try and if we can come in and touch a block as much as we can and get as much of it done. So we're not disrupting businesses and, you know, traffic and kind of all of those things. We've done a really, really good job of that in Cedar Falls and we've had great dialogue so far here at Marion to make sure that we can kind of coordinate things exactly the same way. The, the property then following, the second phase of it, on the back of it, is what Audrey's calling Broad and Main on seven, or I'm sorry, Broad and Main on Sixth. Broad and Main on Sixth is essentially a residential property. If it goes the way that we expect, it'll probably be bigger units, more focused on, I'm going to say old people just because I am one, people that are the more of the post-suburban, I think is what she likes to call them, people that, you know, are interested in a lifestyle. It's very much a lifestyle that brings them to downtown. These will probably be by and large, larger one bedroom, some two bedrooms and perhaps even three bedrooms. They care about storage. They care about amenities, probably have a foot fit in the center, probably have indoor parking, that kind of amenity that would happen in it typically. And I think those who saw Cedar Falls, you've, you've seen an example of that. So this would be probably a two to two and a half year sort of a redevelopment effort. And again, the thought would be when we're done, all of this would be done in that block. We'll move on to the next area. Who are we? Go to the next slide. We, in this case, and we'd like to make sure that you understand who you're dealing with in transparency, we really are the developer that will lead this project. We really will be the main contact. We will obviously be reaching out on a number of occasions to various different divisions of the community and obviously talking to merchants in the Downtown Association and folks like that. That's our role in this. So we're really leading this. We have a design build team that we work with. Shiva Hattori, a local architect, is leading our design effort. I think you're familiar with their work probably. And we have a great group that does all of our construction work. They serve as a construction manager and they're called the DCI Group. I would tell you that we expect that we will have a lot of trades and a lot of people, building supplies and if we can get them, I guess, as many, as many materials and as many subcontractors as we can locally for the project. This will be something that we'll want to definitely focus on. Go to the next one. This is just for the record, we want to just sort of show you some examples of projects that we've done in Cedar Falls. You can tell the master plan that's over on the left-hand side gives you a sense. We actually are on our sixth building now in downtown Cedar Falls. We have about $50 million worth of work that we have done in the downtown and we've more than doubled the assessed value in the property or in the downtown and almost all of the, the existing building owners have seen a pretty significant uptick in the values of their buildings as well. So we like to work alongside of the existing merchants and the existing buildings as much as possible and fill in those gaps and sort of lift everyone up. You can sort of see the examples here of, I'll call it modern work that we've done. And as I said, we are trying to be extremely sensitive about also honoring the historical properties that are down here. And so we really want to try and find a good balance of historical and the more contemporary looking, thinking that there are people that really appreciate both. Down below actually is the plaza that I talked to you about, the community space. And we actually have pictures of that that we can show right now. And if it wasn't 116 this weekend, we probably hadn't have a lot of people in there. So we're happy to have that one. Go to the next project. So let's talk about the partnership and essentially what you can expect from us and how it is that we would typically work with you on this. So we are really here and talking about taking a step into Marion. We have shown you what I'll call conceptual plans that are there. I would tell you that when we put together the master plan that we did for Cedar Falls and sat in front of the council this exact same way, afterwards, I think I lost count at something like 300 cups of coffee that I bought, maybe honestly a couple of beers along the way, too. But it was because there's a tremendous amount of input that we really seek from people, both in the downtown merchants, building owners, citizens. We also are very involved and made presentations and would expect to do the same thing with the Main Street, the city property owners and related things. We expect that this plan would complement, you know, obviously great investments and work that are already underway. We really are coordinating and would continue to want to work extremely closely with you as you're working on the library project, with the streetscape improvements, with the plaza project, with the other related public projects that are there, as much from a design standpoint and coordination of when we're doing the work as is possible. So we typically have weekly meetings and have for a decade with the Cedar Falls folks and would expect to do the same thing with your folks. So we really want to touch things as much as possible only once and really get out of the way of them. When it comes to an actual building and once we've gotten that input and we feel like we're prepared to make a presentation on it, we really would go through the typical design review process that you have in Cedar Falls. It's a P and Z kind of a process. I expect that you have a similar one. We'll figure out exactly how that works and work through the design reviews and essentially the permitting process that are there. But I wanted to make the point to make sure that everyone understands. We expect that there'll be, you know, plenty of opportunity for public comment and for, you know, the opportunity to sort of, if there's some final fine tuning on any one of these projects, we want to make sure that we've got that input into them. And then we will can begin construction. Our timing for this first project is we're beginning now and our hope will be that the MU1 building, we would have done for the spring of 2022. So a year from this coming spring is, is our timing for that one. And the residential property, then one year thereafter. So by the end of, spring of 2023, we would like to have that block done as much as possible and then move on to the next one. As we understand it, you know, tonight, what we're doing is we're really answering questions. We're really trying to make certain that there's an opportunity for the public and for everyone to see and sort of understand what it is that we are beginning. And I think that's the key verb that we would want to point out is this is a beginning. We expect to be engaged a lot. I expect I'm going to get a lot of miles going back and forth on Interstate 380 over this. And I know our staff feels exactly the same way. We are working currently on a development agreement, as I understand. And there is, I believe, a formal meeting that is later this week to authorize staff to begin working on that with us. We expect that then with the, I'd say the furtherance or the maturity of the design, we would be back in front with really the planning and the design review and ultimately the construction reviews again later this fall. So the hope would be we would probably start demolition, fall over the winter, something like that for construction again as soon as possible. So I think that's the end of my, yep, I got a nod from my technical fellow in the back here. Thank you very much. I appreciate that. And questions, Audrey and I could answer.
Thank you. Questions? Go ahead, Renee.
Welcome. I was one of the people who got to firsthand come and see what you guys have done in Cedar Falls and it's amazing. It's really next level and I believe it's what Marion's poised for. So I'm really excited about the project. Just a quick question. In review of our design standards for the uptown, are you completely an adherence with those or will you be asking for tweaks based on, you know, what you've seen? Are we even to that level of detail yet?
I don't know that we're at that level of detail now. I would tell you that the best standards that we have seen are the more specific standards that we have seen. The hardest part about being a developer and going through this process is sort of having, I will say, negotiate every little thing. It sort of is counterintuitive to think if you have, you know, the modern form base codes and sort of all the design standards that somehow or other, that would be hard for us as developers to work with. It's actually the opposite because it gives clarity for us to be able to give to, you know, our developer, to our design and build team and say, oh, here's what they want and, you know, kind of off we go. The other thing that's really heartening about those is we also then understand that if we're being held to that level of fit and finish or that level of expense, that others would come in alongside of us. It's, I think, really important to understand that when we are coming in, we expected the properties that we're going to be building on a per-square-foot basis are probably more expensive than anything else that's being built in town. That's typical of a downtown urban setting like this. We understand that and we want to make sure that when others are coming in, they're also doing the same thing. So we, I haven't heard that we have any problems with them. We don't typically, we actually appreciate that.
And from what I saw in Cedar Falls with your work there, it looks like it would fit right in here, too. But thanks again. Thanks for being here tonight.
Thank you.
Yeah. So I think, so the mayor, Renee and I were part of that contingency that was up in Cedar Falls earlier this year. And if you're able to see the scope of the project and I think the quality of the project, that goes a long, long ways. And again, I'll make this comment now and I'm happy to make it another hundred times, that I agree with Nick Glue that I've lived in Marion since 1962. And this is absolutely one of the most important projects that this city has seen and will see in a very, very long time. So I would encourage the rest of the members of the city council to maybe try to schedule a trip up to Cedar Falls, take a half day off. Again, this is, this, the magnitude of this project is so important. The decisions that we're going to be making and as Mark is talking about, you know, you're going to be in front of us, you and/or your team or Audrey are going to be in front of us a lot of times. And so I think understanding and having that vision of what you've done, what you're trying to bring to Marion goes in extremely long ways. I think we are impressed with what we saw during our visit and I think the others kind of need to have that experience and that feel as well.
I think what you said there is really key. And I think there's a couple of important sort of observations that I would make. First of all is we wouldn't be down here if we thought, you know, this was another, I'm going to just say, just another development project. We are very much trying to build something special. We understand and have heard very clearly that you want something special and that's honestly why I'm not retiring and that's a different story. But, you know, we want to, we said at the beginning of this, we were trying to build a place, you know, the kind of a thing that people say, this is really, you know, something special. I can see myself living and working in Marion because of this. The second thing that I'll really point out is that when we started in Cedar Falls, Cedar Falls has 25 or 30 years worth of redevelopment that has gone through it. And it, you know, And it, you know, is an award-winning downtown and, you know, has national recognition and everything else. But I don't think anyone really thought that something as crazy as COVID would come around and challenge, I mean, literally, the fabric of these things. So you can't sit back and sort of say, aren't we great? And look at all the awards that we've gotten because literally you never know what's happening. And I think now a lot of people are seeing, boy, we're sure glad we had all the people that are living downtown. We're sure glad we have all the offices downtown that we, we're sure glad that we have outside spaces. I don't think people were as glad about that 10 years ago as they are really now. So this is that opportunity where we have really to sort of collectively as a community sort of say, okay, what do we think is next? And how can we really, you know, build this as a special place for the, whatever the world's going to look like in five or 10 years? Thank you.
Anyone else?
Well, this is my first glimpse at this project. I wasn't on the council when this was first brought forth, and so I'm anxious to go take a road trip. I'll see if I can get time off from work. Inside joke. So can you recap again what you see to be the, the principal milestones that you want to operate under? You mentioned a few dates. I'd like just to hear those again, and if there's a few additional components to your schedule that you can comment on, I'd like to just hear that.
Sure, happy to do it. So I'll say today is go. As far as we're concerned, and actually, I'm pleased to announce our financing was approved a couple of hours ago. So, I mean, we're literally having much of this happening in real time. We have engaged our design team. They are working right now in putting together the, really, the, the design and marketing plans for this. Our thought is, I would say, over the next probably two to three months, that work will be done and we expect to be back with those designs in hand and then going through the construction approval, designing, construction approval process. Our sort of working assumption is, is that that's done here mid Q4, I would say, probably in October, November. And that we'll really begin demolition as soon as what we really have those things through. The construction will commence basically immediately with the completion of the demolition. Right now, our working assumption is, is that we will not demolish that entire building. We think that we'll do it in two phases and we'll see how that works out exactly. And then construction would really commence on the front portion of it with, with the completion of the demolition. Our estimate is March of 2022 for completion of the MU1, the broad main on Seventh Building. As I indicated, the Sixth Street property really follows that by a year. And our hope would be, I mean, essentially, spring of 2023, that we would have the entire block redone. Now, a couple of working things that I think we haven't come through. The coordination, essentially, I know you have a plaza design project that's going on right now. There's also some work in Seventh Avenue, as we understand that's being worked on. We've got to coordinate with your, your folks to really get, your planning folks to really get a handle on what the timing of those things look like. We may adjust somewhat on either side of it, just based on sort of how those, those projects go through. Our hope would be, and we do a lot of this, we, we would like to sort of close an area, enclose an area and keep as much of the construction within the closed off area as we can. So if there's a Seventh Avenue, for example, closing, you know, like to try and do it one direction and keep construction on the inside, finish it with the street work on the outside. Rick work, if that's the case, maybe that kind of thing. So those have, details haven't really been yet nailed down. But when we come through with design approvals, we will have those nailed down.
Well, thank you for that additional detail. I, I would just maybe pick up on a comment that Steve made, and that is, I can see why this is a vital project for the community. And I, based on the things I've heard from residents, as many of city staff have and the rest of council, you know, we're, we've suffered some great adversity. But I think there is that spirit to rebound. And I think something like this, starting up and having some public visibility will inject additional energy into the community to know we're just going to be better after all of this.
I want to sort of leave a final comment and want to make sure that I say this for the record. We are not developers who come in and build buildings and then sell them to the marketplace. And, you know, thank you very much. We're on to the next project. We are develop and hold people. So we stand here essentially walking in and making an investment in a community. And we understand, you know, the community's been hit really hard, but we have confidence in the leadership and we have confidence in the citizenry, and we think you're going to come out stronger. And we're happy to be helping and be part of that. So.
Thank you very much.
You're most welcome. Thank you.
Anything else, Nick?
So just to kind of sum things up, there's a couple of items on the council agenda today, and city manager can go into greater detail, but everything with this project where we're at now is, is, is very intentional. And Mark and his team have been very diligent in planning to get to this point, to know that we wanted to get to this point when they, at, at the point that they had done the right things and actually securing the property and having communications with tenants and just being very sensitive to those types of factors that we know have had some history in the past with that, with that block. So those things have all happened to a point now that we're excited to be at, at this juncture. But even if you look in the consent calendar, I think there's a set date for a public hearing. Normally, we'd go to a MOU. This is again intentionally, we're going right to a development agreement because this project's ready for that. So we just want you to know, and Mark would echo this, as we start moving forward in the next couple of weeks, as you have questions, please don't hesitate to reach out to either us or Mark and his, his team with any questions you might have. The entire staff, when you talk about all the coordination that, that Mark referenced, a lot of the streetscape planning, bringing RDG on board to begin designing the plaza, all of these steps have been carefully orchestrated, knowing with a high level of confidence that we were, we were working towards this day. And so staff has been great, planning, engineering. Mark has had conference calls with the library and their design team just to introduce and coordinate the timing of hopefully when these construction schedules will align. His team at SHIVE has been introduced to the team at RDG. So he's not just talking about this collaboration, but we've already seen it play out, knowing that several steps had to move forward. So again, please reach out with any questions you have. We do have a pretty tightly orchestrated schedule in the next month, month and a half. And we just want you guys to have all the best information possible. So thanks again for your time this afternoon.
Thank you. Okay, so I don't see anything marked by staff for discussion until page four. At the bottom of page four, prior to that, any, anything that needs to be discussed individually? Yes, go ahead, Renee.
On page one at the bottom, I was absent for two of those four, so I will be abstaining from those dates. I don't know. I know we usually pull those if it's just easier to let Rachel know in advance. That's what I'm doing.
Page, page two or page one?
No, page one. It's not, A, it's 1A1. I was absent from the fourth and the 12th. So I'll be abstaining from those. So however you'd like to list it on the agenda, so it's the easiest. Just wanted to put that out there. Thanks.
Hey, Rachel. Okay, anything on page two that needs to be discussed separately? Page three? Page four? Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, I, maybe it's just kind of a picky Yoon reaction, but I'm looking at A2 and to approve the legal services agreement. And that's effective for the period July 1 of 2020 through June 30, 2021. I, I guess I just would have thought we might have had an opportunity to handle that in advance of this unless there's some peculiarity that prevented us from having that on an agenda. I, I guess what it amounts to is, is that it's, we're approving something that's retroactive back to July 1. My personal preference would be do it a month to 45 days before.
I can address that.
Go ahead.
My preference would also be to do that in advance. However, since I'm the person who keeps track of that and gets those contracts over to Rachel, it's completely on me. I totally slipped those. I talked a lot about them and then forgot to send the agreements over to Rachel. So.
I, I certainly have a strong appreciation of things lapsing from my memory. Thank you.
Okay, anything else prior to regular agenda item E1? Anything prior to that? Okay, we'll get to E1 under engineering then.
Yes, Your Honor, so E1 is just a request from the Lynnmark Community School District to look at adding a school zone along 35th Avenue, along the new school. And so this would go to TAC, assuming that city council was in favor of, of doing this. We have done this in most of the school zones, so.
Any questions or concerns about that? Okay, for the next item, I'll turn it over to Mayor Protem. E2?
Go ahead, Mike.
So what this is actually adding to the contracts, we, the first contract was the clearing and grubbing. The second amendment we did was for the utilities, the signals. And then this one is now actually adding the paving and landscaping. So if you've been out there lately, you can see most of the pile is gone, and they've made significant progress on that. And so they're actually looking at doing the paving from the roundabout to 22nd and including 22nd yet this year, if not more. So we need to add this to the contract in order for them to proceed with that. We have approved the developers' agreement where we pay up to 2.6 million. This would bring that up quite a bit, and so that would go into the TIFF agreement that they would actually be paying for that. So once we hit that 2.6, we will stop writing checks to them, and then it will go to the TIFF loan payment. But they are looking to go forward. Obviously, Sixth Avenue is important to get that in so that then we can start on Seventh Avenue, as you just saw that presentation. So they have been making good progress, and so we want to go ahead and improve this and get this moving.
So can you clarify again, is this, this amount to cover the paving and landscaping for 19th all the way to 26th?
Yes, sir. So it will actually be all of the project, but
Okay.
Knowing that winter will hit us at some point, we may not get it all paved. Talking with a boat in Genesis, they believe that they will at least get 22nd to the roundabout paved. The section of 19th, unless we get all of that done, it's hard to not leave that street open unless we get everything else done. And then obviously, with 22nd, that signal may not be here in time. So it may just be a T intersection with a stop sign for northbound traffic and keeping that east-west traffic flowing. But that's something that can be built later once that traffic band gets up there. It's still in the contract. But obviously, with the, the storm event, signal poles are a little hard to get a hold of right now, and there are several projects that need them, so.
But at this point in time, I've been asking, I've been wanting to get a pretty decent update on this project. But at this point in time, with this change order, we still have the possibility of getting that completed all the way through?
It's a possibility, yes, but they're, they're thinking at this point that it would only be 22nd to the east at least for paving.
Okay. Questions? Will?
Are they, with this contract, are they paving from or designing the road, I guess, from six, 22nd from sixth to fifth? Is that part of this or is that separate?
Yes, that, that's included as well. Yes. And that's what they think. They'll get that north-south and everything east of that is right now of the current plan. Then we could actually open that section up and then have another connection in there. Leave 19th then for next year if we can't get to it because winter sets in and do that next year. But that way, we only have a small section to get in there.
Okay. Grant, go ahead. So this word going up to 22nd, what, what percentage of the total overall project does that represent that is envisioned under the contract?
So this includes everything. So this includes the rest of the project. So it's just a matter of how weather plays out, you know, if it stays dry and hot like it is, they can obviously get a lot of stuff done. Other than if it's 100 degrees plus, we don't want them to pave because it's not good for our pavement.
Okay, so where does the project terminate?
So this would start at 19th where we have stopped on the west side of 19th, and it goes all the way to the roundabout. It's what this contract is for.
Thank you.
Well, it's, it's an important project, so we want to make sure we're, everybody understands what's going on. So I appreciate the update. Any other questions? All right. Thanks, Mike. Turn the meeting back to the mayor.
Okay, under community development, there are two items, and neither is marked. Any questions on those? All right, then we have a COVID update. Is that Lon? I would just note that we've, we've suspended meetings of the task force with the, with the disaster response, so.
Yep. If you had asked me three weeks ago if I'd be standing up here and the pandemic would take second fiddle in the field of disaster response, I would have given you quite a, quite a look, but unfortunately, I think that's the situation that we find ourselves in. Organizationally, we have not had to change policies or adopt new policies for this one recently. As the council knows, there was a big flurry of activity shortly after the CARES Act came out that really required a lot of adjustment. About every two weeks, the Department of Labor would come out with new regulations and guidelines, and it was a rapidly evolving area of public policy. The one thing that I would point out that is new on this, it was under Administrative Services, but we do have a resolution that we're going to be having the council approve on Thursday that will provide eligibility for us to be reimbursed by the state for many of our COVID-related expenses. So what the state has done is that the governor's office set aside 100 million of the 1.2 billion that Iowa has received from the CARES Act to reimburse cities for expenses that are not eligible for reimbursement under normal processes. And then they've put together a process to do that. Marion, if we were able to maximize our eligibility, would be able to receive about $990,000. So we'll continue to document that and submit those to the state as those are incurred. Their intent is definitely to make sure they're doing whatever they can to make cities whole, so we definitely appreciate their work in that arena. In Lynn County, Lynn County Public Health has been continuing, of course, to track the statistics locally. They have seen some trends that they don't particularly like, including that over the last couple, last week or so, we've seen double-digit hospitalizations again. The good news is, is that it's, so far at least, it's not taxing their capabilities, but definitely worth reminding folks, especially when you're out working and exercising and in close proximity to others doing storm relief, that COVID is still out there. So this is the time where we really cannot relax our diligence or we'll risk another outbreak.
Questions for Lon? Yes, Renee?
Thank you. So what percentage do you anticipate that reimbursement from the state covering of our own? Will, will we have a gap that we have to fill in, or do you anticipate it covering all expenses to date so far?
I will admit, I haven't been tracking that because LeAnn's been working on that as a finance project, but we can have an update for you on Thursday.
And do you, and does that money, is it finite in terms of, you know, if we're still incurring COVID expenses for six to eight months or longer, will the state kick in a second wave? Or do you have any idea of what they're, how they're planning to handle that?
I believe the eligibility, eligibility period goes through December 31st of this year.
Grant?
When do you, do you think you would be opening City Hall back to public traffic?
We've always said that we'd reconsider it again after Labor Day, but we'll take a close look at what's happening with the virus activity in this area and coordinate with the other municipal entities. Our intent has always been that Marion, Iowa, the Cedar Rapids, the metro communities really reopen to the public kind of all at the same time. Lynn County is a little bit ahead of us on that, but they have a pretty robust system in place where everybody's taking. Lynn County is a little bit ahead of us on that, but they have a pretty robust system in place where everybody's taking appointments. They have even even numbers, and they have they co-locate a lot with nonprofits and other entities, so their situation is a little different than ours.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you. That brings us to the end of the meeting. Oh, yes, go ahead.
Yeah, just to have have one request, maybe to get an update on Thursday. It'd be a brief update from Seth and the Parks Department. And that would be related to, we have a number of trees in the parking area throughout the city that have been marked. I had one citizen get hold of me already about a specific tree that they had that they don't feel should have been marked, and so it kind of got me thinking that as you drive around, as you go through the city, obviously, a lot of those trees need to come down. And I think it'd be worthwhile, since these trees are in every section of the city, maybe to get an update on what our policy is, what's the criteria for the marking, what's the plan, taking those trees down, et cetera, so that I think everybody here, we've talked about a lot of other aspects of the city. That's one that's going to be coming up, but I think just to get an update on that, so that we're knowledgeable, knowledgeable, knowledgeable about that would be helpful.
Certainly.
Okay. Is it one dot or two dots? There's a difference. Okay, if there's nothing else, the meeting is adjourned. We'll see you on Thursday. Thanks to everyone for your hard work during this past couple of weeks.